Okay, so we're gonna call the meeting to orders. Go ahead, Peter.
I don't have an agenda to go by, so I'm just typing.
I'm just telling you, we're calling it to orders. So, first thing we have is the minutes of the, uh, May 7th meeting. And I don't have that meeting. Okay, so we're gonna have to postpone approval of the May 7th meetings. Addition, deletion to the agenda. There isn't an agenda. Members of the public, you're again, the only one, let you go tomorrow. Review and approve the minutes, we gotta postpone. We don't have superintendent's report. Um, we don't have a communications report that I believe. Pardon? No, we got something really important to do, hopefully Matt's gonna stick around for me. Update on building studies, they did Wardsboro since...
Yeah, yeah, so both are done. Both the studies are done and are in the hands of the schools.
So, Matt printed ours, and except for a few little comments like, I think we can, I know we can find the year we did the roof. So we can give an exact year, and there was a couple other little things. I thought it was pretty, and I haven't seen anything, they cleared it me. Were you okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, you have the historical knowledge of the building, so I didn't pick up on that.
The board reviewed you, Dover Board? You guys have to review or you didn't?
No, no, I mean, we're just paying for it. But I think it's more of a useful item for the River Valleys. So why don't we do this, Dwight? Why don't you get both reports together?
Sure.
And why don't we say at the next meeting, we have an agenda item? If we actually do an agenda?
Okay.
Hey, let's, I'm gonna start writing the agenda now. That's really my fault.
Will you attach it so we can take a look at it?
Yeah, they're, they're really long, so I wouldn't attach it, but I think we can email to people.
With the principals and if you can't.
Yeah, Matt, you print it one up here, right? Okay, so there is one here, and then we'll see if we can make one available.
Could do that instead.
Do you know if the Dover school's gonna do any of the items on there? Or is this kinda thing you're gonna wait on?
No, we didn't, we didn't put any money away this year to do any repairs. We figured that we would discuss that because instead of spending our money, that way we can all be, um, we can all make decisions together.
Yeah, so I think Wardsboro's got some items on there, they are gonna be doing. How many new roofs and some other items, but...
And I don't think, I don't think there was anything in the report, Matt, that said we had to do it right away. Maybe with the exception of the furnace controls.
That was the most, that was the thing that seemed to be most pressing.
Might be a few items on there, sometimes some code, we had some items like that too.
I don't think we had anything code-wise, did we?
We had one, there was two of our, we had a connection between 2 and 10 is the oil tanks. That's, that's a no-no. Other than that, minor stuff, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things we got caught on is, you know, we have a huge oil tank in the ground. They have a life expectancy.
Like, one that's being used or then...
Oh, it's been, yeah. Yeah, we were electric before the addition, and then when they did the addition, that's why, all those air handles, you can't see them here, but there's those blue things, those used to be electric heaters. So if you look, you see they were all retrofitted with pipe on the outside of them because they installed the boilers and ran lines. And then the worst thing was that we use this Johnson Control Group, and there's only one company that services them out of Burlington, and for them to come doing anything, like just to, you know, turn the heat up or down, they drive down here to get whacked for like $300 just from the show up. And then we looked at doing something else, and it was gonna be like $20,000, and we figured suffer what they're doing.
All right, well, I'll email all the reports.
Yeah, so email that, make sure everybody gets a copy. It's all email. Carrie, that way you can write your own. I just, I don't read well on the computer.
They're drafts, but so, does the...
I think we have to approve that.
Approve them, but I would think each individual board needs to approve.
Okay, so Matt, will you head back to our next meeting for Dover? Just to, and then just make sure that we add that.
Oh, yeah, no, I've already, I've already done it.
Will you want to approve the report?
Yeah, approve the draft report, and then, then they can do the final report.
So we'll discuss this building study, and we'll lit that, you can kinda lead that, okay buddy?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. And then, um, so we ratified the work session last meeting, so Bill's got that. And, um, the only problem is, is that if we meet the second meeting of the month on the 18th, he's also got River Valleys that night, and they actually had that night before us. So, if we planned on meeting on the 18th at the last meeting, June 18th and July 23rd, the problem is if we meet those nights, he's gotta meet with River Valley, so we don't get him, we're only meeting once.
You mean the other, the other school district?
Yeah, the River Valley School. Uh, I'm sorry, the West River.
Okay.
West River.
I was thinking, that's us, isn't it?
That's us.
He means us, right? I gotcha, I know what you meant.
Listen to what I mean, now. That's, yeah, thank you, Carrie. That'd be really bad, isn't it? So anyways, we can still meet if we want, we just don't have Bill here. And Bill did say that he feels he'll be ready on the 18th to start presenting some stuff to us.
Do you mean to?
Yeah. If he can meet with us. But he can't meet with us, so if we go to the 25th, he would be able to, you know, make an initial presentation on some of the stuff he's thought of. So, it's up to you folks. I know, Laura, you can't make the 25th, right? If you were to move it.
25th, I can make.
Oh, you can't make the 18th?
Let's see.
I can make the 25th.
No, I cannot make the 25th. I can make the 18th, I cannot make the 25th.
I have to stay with the last baseball game, and I'm missing all the games on Mondays, so I'm gonna try to...
Well, we got three, so let's just hope we can pull one out of here. Out of Wardsboro.
Yeah.
So why don't we tentatively, when we, we'll set the next meeting for that 25th? Because I think it'd be important to have Bill here.
It's probably more important to have Bill if he's gonna present. Does it have to be on Monday?
Oh, no, I, we may be able, the problem is, I don't know what the rest of his schedule's like for, like, I don't know what he does on a Tuesday night.
Well, I can't make that Tuesday. Monday's best night for me.
Yeah, and I think we've kinda come to that. Well, no, we were doing that a lot because you were in legislature, so that way you can make money before you went up to the most peculiar. Yeah, see, this is the problem. You never know which way to go. Let's shoot for the 25th, and then we'll send something out. If that night doesn't look good, then we'll, we'll get a notice after everybody else. Okay, so, um...
When would you meet on the 25th? Your 7 o'clock start, or would you start earlier?
No, well, we could start earlier if we wanted to, because we don't have...
We're not having the...
We're not gonna have a board meeting before that. Our board meeting will be the week before.
Which, which ones are we not doing? We're not doing the one, the first?
Right.
Okay, so our next meeting, it's gonna be that one.
Right, so we're gonna meet June 25th in Dover, even though, so we'll be two weeks, two meetings in a row, and then July 20... Right, and the only reason we're gonna meet Dover was, was gonna be a Dover school board meeting also, but...
Yeah, that's fine, that was good with us too.
July 23rd would be in Wardsboro.
Right.
That's right.
7 o'clock start?
Right, and now the only thing is, we'll, we'll know in June, but I think that'd be also the West River meeting also. So we'll just wanna check, we'll check with Bill at the next meeting. The July meeting may be...
May be a conflict as well.
But we'll, let's cross that bridge when we get to it. Okay? Pardon? July 23rd.
Is it 25th at 7:00 PM or 6?
Well, that's where I was just trying to get...
Oh, okay.
I haven't heard yet. So, July, June 25th, so we don't have the Dover meeting beforehand, so we could start at 6:00 or 6:30 if you guys wanted to just get out a little earlier. Or we can meet at 7:00?
Yes.
Yes, what?
We can't make it.
Which one?
23rd?
25th.
Oh, 25th, I mean.
What time do you want to meet?
No, 25th, I'm not here.
You cannot meet.
I know, so that's why, that's why you were speaking.
Stop talking, Sibylle.
So, will this board be on June 4th?
No. No, because right now, we're pretty much, we've got one more little thing to do, and then we turn it over to the administration to come up with a school for us. Okay, so let's do June 25th at 6:30, I'm gonna compromise. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I think I'm the only one.
Well, no, Carrie will be in there. No, that's at Monday, she said no.
If we don't have a game, I'll be there.
Okay. Pray for rain, pray for rain. Okay.
So you've got June 25th, 6:30 PM in Dover, you've got July 23rd, 7:00 PM?
Yeah, in Wardsboro, but we'll change that one, I'm sure. Peter, it's hard to follow us, isn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, keep my teeth firmly clamped. In somebody's flesh.
Okay. Well, this is gonna be a really quick meeting, Peter, you're gonna be very happy, Carrie may even be able to go see the end of the game. Okay?
I missed out on the game too, just so you know. I was coaching third base, I left right from there.
Well, did they want you to leave?
I think they did. Instead of getting a...
So there you go, we're doing them a favor. If they start winning now, they're gonna love us. Okay, so last meeting, we, we took care of the, um, we, we set the goals for Bill. Um, and then the last thing we were working on is, we were working on, um, how to, how to, um, yeah, um, um, how to, the measurements, how we knew that we got there. So, this is what we, we kinda came up with, and we pretty much agreed on the first few things, but we did ask Bill to speak to his administrators. When you guys wanna, there's enough for everybody.
Go, give me one.
Yeah, you're getting one, just try not to acknowledge the guy behind the camera. It's like the guy behind the curtain in The Wizard of Oz. So, we talked about number one, all students demonstrate proficiency and growth, and how do we do that? So, um, we can measure the assessment, the S-BACs, the NGSS, the fitness gram, and the educational quality reviews, snapshots, IFR, CIPs, and equity index. And if you wanna ever be a teacher, you better know what every one of them little things means. Number two, a budget voter support approved, justifiable to citizens, and in line with previous budgets supported by the communities. So measurements, the budget passes, yay! Budget is in line and near previous budgets from separate districts, and the board is prepared to explain the budget to the citizens, so that when we go to a meeting and somebody says, "Why are you spending that much money on transportation?", we can give them an answer, as you told us to. Number three, yes? What? Okay. Three, families are involved. Attendance at school functions, parent-teacher conferences, and Mark, I don't think you attending all the time counts as a parent. I think you need more of you, so.
I, yeah.
Volunteering, parent survey results, and homeschool compact. And those are all measurable. Number four was, board provides updated and easily accessible information in a variety of multimedia outlets in the community. So website hit counts, BCTV viewing data, regular email correspondence, newsletter in Buckleville News, and presence at community events. So the guy behind the camera there, whom we cannot acknowledge or wave to, 'cause he's behind the screen, gave me some numbers today. So you guys are gonna love this. As of May 9th, 2018, our 9/22/17 meeting when the governor was here, we had 201 hits on YouTube. On 11/6, we had 3,900 hits. We've got a big question mark, 'cause he says there was some other high school or some school district out in California. That may have been just a little bit of a, you know, you kinda throw, what is that? You throw away the high and the low, and you get the median or something?
Why was it high? Because of...
There was a high school, he said, out in California that is similar.
It has the same, same letters.
So it may have been, you know, like there was a big football game, and people were trying to get to it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Cause 3,900 hits, I mean, we, we didn't break 500.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But 11/20, we had 2,43. 12/4, we had 2,53. Um, 12/18, 120. The big one was January 15th, was 305. And February 5th, we had 332. And then April 2nd, we had 681. Which was, April 2nd.
April 2nd.
And that was when we started talking about, you know, the, the kinda more of the educational qualities of the school. And then, you remember, it, it, because it's cumulative, um, you know, you got 22 for the 4/23 meeting, and the 2/6 meeting was at 71. So I mean, we're getting really good turnout, because, you know, we talked about, was it worthwhile spending a hundred dollars on anything? You know, if we had, if we had 305 people come to a town meeting, we'd be all looking at each other and wondering what we did wrong.
Good point. And that's just the YouTube, right?
That's just YouTube, that's not BCTV?
It's both.
It's, oh, combination, okay. But that's still really good.
I occasionally ask, I don't know, are we allowed to talk to anybody by the camera or something?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
Sometimes I see that pop up on Facebook, you know, like someone likes them or something, and you can link right from there. Is that because someone, is that what's going on? Someone like, likes it, or is it someone posting it?
Their unique hits. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's a unique computer. So, for whatever reason, if Rich wanted to view one meeting 16 times, it would count 16 times.
No, no, I'm not asking that, but, yes, occasionally I'll see it pop up. You can actually link on it from Facebook, and it'll take you over to YouTube. Have you seen that occasionally? Wondering how that happens, someone obviously liked it.
Somebody has to post it.
Someone has to post it, right?
Yes.
Maybe that's what's going on.
You, you haven't excited?
I was, I was just stretching, but somebody can, on any social, any social media, somebody can just post a link to, to either direct it to them or...
I think it was BCTV that posted.
Oh, I don't know.
Could be.
BCTV has its own...
Uh, what? But you have it on Facebook and...
Yeah, we have Facebook and Twitter, and we have all.
Yeah, you have all of us, yeah, okay.
So, again, you know, I got really shot down on that one too, so the hundred dollars is, is really well worth it. Good job, boss.
Thank you.
And thanks for the information, that was really good. And then, you know, the Buckleville News, you know, it's actually, you know, the last few articles she's done have been really nice. And the presence, you know, out there, and it's not really in here, but I noticed in the post office, the West Dover Post Office, you know, that River Valley poster she did really grabs your attention. Hear what people are saying, or hear what they said, or so.
The survey one?
Yeah, the survey one, I mean, it actually kinda, I noticed it today because I just happened to be walking out, and I turned and looked, and, you know, it was kinda right there in your face, so. And I think, Matt, you post that at the school and some other places, when Amida sends out those?
Yeah, we, well, we keep a link, a, a link all the time to the, to the blog on our website. When Amida sends things to us to send out, we send it out through our flyer, usually, to our COs.
I mean, everyone in town gets, gets that. Comes to everyone's home, it gets mailed out to every single resident in Wardsboro.
And gets taken online, the color version is good.
Yeah, so everyone, it gets, the only drawback is like once a month.
Certainly.
Are there other places that you'd like me to post it besides the post office?
Well, usually we hit the two post offices, East and West Dover.
I always forget there's an East Dover Post Office.
Yeah. 05341. That's where some of us get our mail, like probably the three board members sitting up here.
I know.
Oh, you don't get it over there? You're a traitor.
I'm not a traitor. East Dover.
There you go, see, we're real, you're a teacher, teacher of a father.
Yeah, but you're, you're at West Dover also, so.
Yeah, that's all right.
I know West Dover PO box of business does. And then personalized learning plans for every student, that was one we were kinda hung up on. And we actually had four things, if you remember, and the one that we looked at last meeting. And we asked Bill to go talk to his administrators on that. And, um, we had all students, well, that's because we had the, the only grade one, all students, 7 through 12. So, Matt, you wanna, I don't wanna put you on the spot, and you don't have to, but is, any comments on your thoughts with Bill?
So Bill and Tammy and I talked about this a little bit. Uh, we thought, uh, starting with 5th and 6th grade would be a good, at least a good transition. Um, Act 77, Ed Quality Standards, specifically ask for personalized learning plans for kids in grades 7 through 12. So, um, I'm not aware of any, that that's reaching down into elementary yet, but we think it would be a good idea to at least be thinking about that for the kids as they head on to 7th grade, to start building those personalized learning plans, and getting them thinking about their learning styles, how they learn, what their interests are, and, um, just helping take responsibility for that.
Any comments, questions?
It seems more appropriate, you know, older students having, um, more challenging work and expectations of being prepared for junior high, rather than having individual learning plans for kindergarten, first grade, second grade. That seems like a...
I mean, that was kinda where we were headed last time, because, you know, we, we said it didn't make sense for the, like, a kindergarten or first grader, but maybe to kinda help the 5th and 6th graders transition, so it's not something brand new and scary to them. You know, "Oh, you're gonna have to do a PLP next year." "Oh, my God!"
I think it'll be a valuable tool to use and prepare them for their next level of education, so.
So why'd you pick 2020?
2020?
Yeah.
Um, let's see if we pull that up.
Cause that, it's a year after you really start, right?
Um, it'll be a year after, so it'll be, it'll give us a year to, to implement it.
And are you gonna have to reinvent the wheel, or are you gonna be able to just kinda use the 7 through 12 model?
Um, I think we'll, we'll take some pieces from that, but I think for the younger kids, developmentally, there will be differences as well. I mean, um, I really personally would like to focus on learning styles and helping kids realize how they learn. I think that's an important piece of this. Um, what their interests are, what motivates them, and really have strategies for how they're gonna access the education. So that they know when they see content, "I have to learn it this way," or "I have to, this is something I've got my hands on," or "I've gotta teach somebody this in order for me to really understand it." So just getting them to start thinking about that in the younger ages is one of the big goals, I think, of the personalized learning plan.
I don't know, is that, we talked about that, what's going on in Wardsboro. Is that similar to what, that, that learning style that Wardsboro's embarking on? They like learning their style, is that, any crossover there?
I confess, I'm not that...
Okay, that should be the question for Tammy.
On the NIC, but I think it's more of an instructional practice approach.
Yeah, right.
So I don't know, I've been imagining that, you know, instructional practice certainly includes being aware of learning styles, but PLP really solidifies the ownership at the student level. So this is how I learn, this is what's important to me. These are the things I know about myself that are gonna help me, you know, be a better learner going forward. So I think the NIC is, is more focused on instructional practice.
Instructional, how to get out of the delivery.
Not to say that students being aware of their learning style is not part of instructional practice. It certainly is.
Right.
But yeah, I would check with Tammy and see if there's more.
That's a good question, 'cause I, that's exactly what I was gonna answer. With IB, does, does this kinda fit into IB for you?
So IB, it's, it's like a portfolio. So an IB will do, you know, we, we've talked about starting portfolios anyway with kids, where they collect their work, but part of that is also an awareness of how they learn. And starting to, you know, get kids aware, make them aware of, you know, how they learned earlier. So it does fit right in, the PLPs fits right in with IB.
And then the student-led conferences, sounds like something too, the, the students kinda led the thing with the select board and...
Yeah, the student-led conference, if you, if you haven't experienced a, a really well-done student-led conference, um, it's really worth checking out. In a student-led conference, the students literally sit with their parents across the table and explain to them all the things they're working on, and go over materials and work samples, what they did well, what they struggled with. And the teachers will give them kind of an outline, these are the things you have to hit in the 20 minutes with your parents. And so they talk about their test scores, they talk about their classroom assignment scores, and, you know, they have to communicate that. So part of that really helps solidify, you know, so much about what they're learning, not only just with the content, but also how they learn and their own learning style, so. Yeah, the, the student-led conferences are a really important part of that, of the PLPs, and just, I think, school in general.
Right.
So, we're doing them in all grades here this year, and so far, it's been very well received.
Student-led?
Student-led conferences, yeah.
But this is on...
We just had an experience, we just went through the 5th grade student-led conferences two weeks ago, and it was, in fact, the kids were really excited. They had their portfolios of all the work that they've done from the beginning of the year, and explaining and sitting down, and how it fitted each category of the IB. And it was a student-led conference. The teacher was kind of mingling through, checking in, but your child was directing of what it was they were learning, what the, what the curriculum was, what the projects they were asked to do, and presenting it, so.
We've had them in our school.
I was gonna say, I thought at one time we had them here before.
I don't remember having them here.
I think one of my kids...
Did they, Mary?
Yeah, because, you know, most of the time, parent conferences, you didn't have your child. I, I kinda, because I never went to a Twin, I never went to a Wilmington or Twin Valley conference. But they come here to them, I don't know. Good job, Laura.
We like them, we really like them.
I think so.
Excellent. And I think that covers your student voice, that we had kinda been bouncing around what student-led conferences, opinions from principals. You guys got to give your opinions. And then, um, we'll just make sure, Peter, can you just make sure that, um, for the next meeting, that we can make sure we remember to ask Tammy beforehand if that fits, you know, how that fits in with the NIC that they're doing? Or if it even does, or fits in with whatever, wherever they're headed with their curriculum? I don't know, you asked for that, when you have your board meeting. Good. So you, everybody got a copy of that, right? And everybody good with that? If you're all good with that, I'd entertain a motion to be...
Can I ask one question?
Ask a hundred.
Well, I, I don't wanna, 'cause I wasn't here, but just, um, and number two, the budget is in line or near previous budgets from separate districts. Is there a discussion about that?
Yeah.
And can I just ask, like, what, so we would be looking to have our budget be similar?
Remember, this is some guidance for the, for the administration to present us with a plan, including a budget, so when they do their budget, they need to keep in line with what had been previously approved by the schools, and in line with their budgets. Our schools, the Wilmington, the Dover and Wardsboro budgets.
I see, I see, okay, okay. Thank you. No, I was thinking about that as...
From separate districts, meaning...
I was thinking about that as ongoing.
No.
I'm good, you're fantastic, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just go back for one question?
Oh, yeah, go back to three if you want.
One question, so family involvement. I know, um, Dwight was talking about that in your student handbook for Wardsboro, that maybe there was a almost contractual agreement with the parents that they would do a certain amount of hours with the school, and that was something different, we don't do that, and I was curious, we talked about...
Yeah, we have, I don't think, we don't have a contractual agreement for that. That's what I thought we should have considered.
Ah, okay.
But we did talk about it at the Wardsboro meeting, and there are, so, maybe there's a meeting, actually. There are certain guides.
Oh, I think there's a meeting.
Yeah, there are certain guides that are, that are kinda expected.
Okay.
And, um, yeah, and then they're, they're forced to sign these in return.
I, I was under the impression that it was, you know, parents, you're going to agree to do five hours of some kind of community service, okay.
That's what I wanted to bring up for discussion, and see if that was something we would consider.
Marborough does that.
I was gonna say, and I think we used to do that here in Dover, too. I think that was like, wasn't that like the National PTA or PTO organization, or some organization was, was floating that around a while ago?
I, I'm not aware of it, but it could have been.
I...
Sounds familiar to me.
I mean, and that's definitely something that can be discussed. Um, I don't know what it, it's not, it's not something that the superintendent, I think, it would be their responsibility. It would be more of a board policy. And I gotta tell you, I mean, so what if, what if Lawrence and, and, you know, Mark or, I mean, whoever says, "Hey, you know, I don't have time to do that, I'm trying to make a living paying my taxes." You know, "I don't have time to give five hours."
Right, I wasn't necessarily advocating, but I was, I'm glad they clarified, 'cause I thought that Wardsboro was affirmative to do that, and it's Marborough. So, thank you.
Okay, is there something, though, that they sound like the parents are supposed to, you know, like, return paperwork, or, you know, check their students?
Yeah, it's called the home, they call it the homeschool compact, which is incredibly confusing.
Yes.
Because everybody thinks it's about being a homeschooler. So, we, we renamed ours this year to School, Student, Family Common Goals Compact. So it's really clear, yeah. But it talks about, you know, I, I'll just give you a few examples. The school and the teacher will, and there's five or six bullets. Students will, and there's five or six bullets. Parents will, five, six bullets, and then there's a spot to sign at the bottom. Doesn't specify a number of hours. I think what Peter's talking about is, Marborough actually has a community service requirement. And I don't know the details of that, but I, I...
Yeah, they work.
Yeah, that might be an issue today.
They dig dirt.
They're common.
They, they make it work.
Yeah.
Well, I thought I heard him say they dig dirt.
I thought so, too.
Yeah.
And dig dirt.
Work in the garden, or...
Oh, 'cause I was gonna say, I need dirt diggers. Oh, 'cause I was just gonna say, I need dirt diggers. Can I sign a compact with them?
You're the board, you can make it happen.
Okay. So, but there is a compact, too.
That's what they call it. Yeah, I mean, I think there's a certain expectation, too, 'cause, you know, we talked about it at the last meeting, and some of the, maybe embarrassed when the other board member said, "Oh, only certain number of parents do all the work." I kinda did an impromptu survey of my own, I think it's about two-thirds of the kids in, in my son's class help, help out in, in a way. So, you know, that, that sounds pretty high to me.
It does, yeah.
You know, and I don't know what, what Dover's like in terms of, but our school's a little smaller, so, but, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Okay, so are there any other questions, anybody on the, on the goals that we reviewed and discussed at the last two meetings? The goals and how we measure them? Goals have to be measurable. I think the Bruins found out they didn't get enough goals and couldn't measure them. So, I would love to entertain a motion to approve the goals as presented tonight.
So I move to, to do that.
Do we have a second to accept the goals?
A second.
Dwight seconds it, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all of you, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous, excellent. We now have enough work, will you make sure, Bill, send Bill an email just saying that they're all approved, so you can now go forward?
Got it.
So, we have now given our administrator everything they need to start designing a school for us. Can't wait to see what it looks like, can you, Mark?
Me, too.
Me, too. One of the only reasons I got on this board was, I thought it'd be so cool to do this. So, I think, you guys, we did a lot of hard work and did a lot of good work, so our reward to ourselves is gonna be, we're gonna get out really early tonight. Um, I don't think, I've got nothing else, there's no update on our contractual issue. Um, I did ask Bill if there was gonna be any updates, and he said even if he wasn't here, there's nothing he'd give us. Um, so we've got our next meeting set.
There's nothing, there's no update on that issue?
No.
Okay.
So, I'm going to ask Marco to come to our next meeting, because remember when he agreed to become our treasurer? He said he'd really like to work on what he's gonna do, what his position's gonna be, and what it's gonna involve. We also, I talked to Andy, Andy says, "You know what I'm coming from, you know what I want, I give it to you in writing." Um, so I think, why don't we work on that at the next meeting? I think Bill's gonna present some stuff to us, just to see if he's heading in the right direction, is my understanding. Um, we'll set up a time for Marco to come in, and then let's also discuss Andy's proposal, because a lot of that, we can, we have the ability to just do that, and let's figure out how we're gonna do that. So for the next meeting in the minutes, Peter, we're gonna wanna discuss the treasurer's position.
Okay.
And we'll also wanna discuss the, the clerk's position.
So Marco's serving for one year.
Everybody just serves one year.
One year anyway, but he, he doesn't wanna serve any further than that.
No, he may. I don't think he doesn't want to, I think he just wants to know what is it he's, we're gonna require of him to do. What is the job description, what is he doing? You know, he says it's hard for him to say, "I'm gonna take fiduciary responsibility for something I have no control over."
But we know that the, the district won't take, do the job.
They can't.
They can't.
Right.
So I, I thought it was Marco, Marco said he wouldn't do it, and if, he's not even a day-to-day operation, what I'm getting at is, do we need to break down the actual job description?
Well, let's talk with him, see what he wants, let's have the business manager come in, see how she's doing, let's see if we can make it work. So, right now, we agreed to give Marco fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, I forget which.
I think it was his stipend for travel.
Right, because twice a month, he, when they, when we start operating, he has to sign checks.
Right.
So that would be for him to make a trip to Wyndham Central, Harmonyville, you know, twice a month, review and sign the, the checks that are created by the business office. So I think that's what we need to do, is we just need to sit down with everybody and say, "What is the treasurer actually doing?"
Exactly.
Because like in Marburg, the treasurer, the school treasurer actually does all the school finances, as they do in Dover, but both Marburg and Dover get a discount from the SU because we do that, because it's run more in-house. All the other towns in Wyndham Central, everything's run out of central office.
But Marco doesn't want to do that.
Well, I think he'd be willing to do that.
He would be willing to do it, I'll find out.
But we wanna go through central office, because it's multiple districts, the business managers get the information, so, that's what we just need to clear up, is, is where everybody, what everybody's job is gonna be.
I think it's excellent, we need to get that straightened out.
And then Andy's position, you know, the clerk, remember the difficulty is, if we have to co-mingle, if we have to mingle the votes before he accounted, or can we, you know, and are we gonna do a vote on the budget, or are we gonna try to do it as, you know, the first one required to do the ballot? But do we wanna change that in the future, and do we wanna change how we elect the members, you know, so it's not by ballot? In Wardsboro, those are just changes we can make. So we should start planning on that, so that can, if we make the changes, we can vote on that, and then let people know, or do we...
Right, and we have to build, build a support, so.
Right, some of those things we did, and Andy had all that, and I've got it all in here, so we'll, we'll dig that back up, and then we'll start to try to make some decisions there. 'Cause then as we're presenting the new district, we can present these other recommendations that we're making, and, and then we'll have to vote on it. And remember, we've always kinda said that we would never vote on something unless it had been discussed in both towns, so that gives Mark the ability to talk to us twice about it, once in each town.
People love hearing me talk about that.
Excellent.
Any questions, comments, thoughts? Yes, sir?
Um, this probably should have been, I probably should have brought up in the public comment, but I forgot about it. Um, I think that Dover should be commended for getting the IB program approved. I think that should be on the, on the record.
Hey, Peter, copy what we wrote in the other minutes. And just say ditto. So our IB got approved, I don't know if you know. So, um, we signed it tonight, we had to make a motion to approve it, so we're gonna have a little bit of celebration and...
To be an IB school.
Is that an annual thing we do, or is it...
No, it's a one-time...
One of the words, you, you were authorized to...
After...
Yeah, we never were IB, we had never been certified, we were in the process of gaining accreditation with IB, is that the proper term? Matt, explain it to Dwight.
So the IB is an accreditation, and so the school has been involved for, we figured, what, nine years, from, from the first thought of this? Um, the authorization phase, which is sort of a candidacy phase, where you have to, you know, prove certain things about your program, your academic program, your instruction, um, took about three years, I think, from the startup, from when that formally started, which is typical amount of time, so, it's a lot of work over three years, and we just found out that we were authorized as, as an IB world school, which is a exciting...
The first public elementary school, first elementary school, and the first public school in the state of Vermont, correct?
Correct, I, I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Excited?
Very excited.
But we can't be proud of the River Valley hats, it has to be our Dover hats, that's right. 'Cause it's a Dover thing.
Good.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Anybody be really upset if we adjourned early?
No, it's great.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Make a motion we adjourned.
Done, stay out of here, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.